To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as we're all.
This is Doug Wyler.
Present.
Mr. Lilly, here.
Mr. McCartney, present.
Mr. Wootton, here.
Mrs. Walker.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the June 10, 2025 agenda for the Jonathan Alder School Board of Education Special Meeting?
Mrs. Doweiler.
Yes.
Mr. Lilly.
Yes.
Mr. McCartney.
Yes.
Mr. Wootton.
Yes.
Mrs. Walker.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Sonia Walker and I am the Jonathan Alder School Board President. And first, I want to thank you all for coming tonight. Better? Okay. Um, yeah. I need one of these at home. Okay. Thank you all for coming tonight. I know that you all have busy lives and we appreciate you being here today. We appreciate you caring. We appreciate you coming to learn more information. We appreciate you helping us learn more information. Um, as you're aware, we had a bond issue on the ballot in May. And, uh, we tried really hard to reach the entire Alder voting community in the eighteen months leading up to the, uh, Master Facility Plan. But we didn't have the outcome we wanted. And that's why we're here tonight, to learn from you. Now, prior to tonight's meeting, the district sent out postcards with QR codes asking the community for, um, comments, questions, concerns. And then also, uh, Mr. McCartney sent out on social media a link asking the community to submit questions, comments, concerns. Um, all board members have reviewed your input. And tonight, we would like to hear from you in attendance. So you can please feel free to write down your questions or there's a podium up here. Um, you can come up and ask questions or just raise your hand. We'll have, um, Tyler walking around with a microphone tonight too if you'd rather sit in your seat. We hope to address all your questions here tonight and the questions that we received, uh, both online during, in the surveys. So we're hoping to cover everything. Now, generally at board meetings, we limit comments to three minutes. And, um, we don't have a time running tonight. However, in the interest of respecting everyone's time, if some of the comments seem to go long, we may just ask you to please sum it up. So if you could have respect and patience with us, that would be great. Okay, so based on the survey responses that we received, uh, we received questions and concerns about the imminent need for space due to growth, the master's facility plan, and all the options that were considered, the actual tax impact on homeowners and how the tax will decrease as more people move into the district, the rationale for property tax versus income tax, and, um, trust and transparency in the entire process. So we categorize that feedback that we received prior to tonight. And each board member will be addressing one of the five categories. So, uh, Mr. Cooley will be addressing growth and capacity planning. Um, I will address proposal, design phasing options. Free configuration and design choice questions will go to Ms. Doug Wyler. Uh, tax impact clarity, Mr. McCartney. And trust, transparency, and communication are Mr. Wootton. Uh, but we're all, this is going to be a dialogue. We'll all be weighing in, uh, to answer questions if anything is missed. Before tonight, I was thinking, how to start this? And I think my biggest concern, if I had, um, my perception based on the feedback received is that we could have tried to communicate more clearly to more people um, in the district. So I'm gonna start with a question to you. And if any of you feel like answering, that would be great. But do you think that that alone impacted the results of this bond issue? Or was it something else? I'm seeing some head nods. Okay. In that regard, go ahead. Tyler? Bear with us as we get our technology down.
Um, my name is Kevin Ice. I'm on the far, my wife and I, Julie and I, Kevin and I moved here two years ago to communicate from Dublin.
Welcome.
We're on the far north side, as far as you can go. And our son is, um, in kindergarten, going to first grade. But with that being said, it's interesting bringing that out because we voiced concerns, but we didn't hear a whole lot of it. You know, it started eighteen months or two years ago, but it wasn't until like three weeks out, a month out, it started getting text emails, it's online, and it's like, what's going on? What is this? And here's what we're voting on. There wasn't the plan. And you brought, some other people obviously brought that up too, like what were the other options? Um, and obviously put a lot of work into this, you embedded it, this community input, but we didn't see that. We were here for two years. So just a perception is sometimes reality. So I don't know if that's what happened, but that's what we perceive.
Yeah. Thank, thank you very much for the comment. We did, um, we did try a lot of numerous ways to invite people. It didn't reach everybody all the time, that being clear. So we're aware that we're hoping to do this differently, starting with tonight, um, in order to be able to reach the community. Uh, and we'll discuss the plan and more in a little bit too, to answer some of those questions. Do you have anything to add? Go ahead.
First of all, thank you for, uh, bringing this to our attention. We are aware that, I want to make two distinctions. If, if families have a child currently enrolled in the school districts, they're gonna receive something. Every person from the buildings, every month from our district, e-news letters. If there's, if you don't have a child, you're not gonna receive those automatic emails. But what we try to do with the community, Tyler Desker, who is our communications person, does a great job. I don't know who that is. So, so someone like you who has a kindergarten child, but you're in the district, you still should be using or receiving these. And what's happening is, in some of the neighborhoods similar to yours where, um, it is our school district, but the houses are just being built. And, um, sometimes the US postage, uh, office still doesn't distinct your neighborhood from Dublin schools. So you could be in that area where you weren't receiving these even though we were trying to reach you. So that's something that we're gonna try to do a better job. Uh, Mr. Desker spends hours, uh, with the US Postal Service trying to make sure that every one of our households are receiving this. And what's in these, for the last two years went out, was how to get ahold of us if we had questions on the ballot or your questions on the bill or the junior high. ElevateAlder.com and QR codes to be able to submit questions for the last eighteen months. So we'll do a better job for those that are positioned like, like you are. Obviously, we have a lot of fans moving to the area.
Yeah, is this a, is that something that goes to all families in the district or just those with children?
Nine thousand. This goes to every one of the, every household in the district should be receiving these.
We didn't.
Okay, so if you would leave your address with us, we'll make sure you get the message.
Sorry. Yeah, you know, quite honestly, I, I think our efforts, um, to communicate were widespread, in all honesty. I mean, we tried to use all forms of media. We've had meetings like this. Our, in fact, our first meeting was much like this, um, a year before we actually went out. We've put it in the, um, Pioneer Press. We've, um, had a number of emails and social media that went out. Um, we, we had a lot of home meetings. I mean, I think Jim, the board, we, we had probably close to fifteen different meetings in the community and neighborhoods. Um, our levy committee had a big social media campaign with tons of emails and texts that went out. And so we tried the best we could, but evidently we did not get the word out to everybody. And we apologize for that. But we are committed to making sure that we communicate better the next time. Um, the things we have done, um, are really about trust and transparency. And we want your trust. And we want you to know what's going on. We absolutely want that. And so we will continue to work. Um, we will try to hold possibly more meetings, maybe in your neighborhoods, whatever it takes. Um, we will, we will do this next time.
Also, for those individuals that, um, didn't receive anything, uh, there also is a website, ElevateAlder.com that has every single thing we have done for the past eighteen months. It really explains in detail how we got to our master plan. It's ElevateAlder.com. And as we were working through the eighteen months, every new meeting, every new decision, every new analysis was posted to that site. And I was playing again with it today. It's very, it's interactive and it's easy to use. And we will continue to update that site with information. Um, but by all means, please share your addresses. We don't want to miss anybody. And please know that it was never intentional and it wasn't our, uh, our plan to keep people in the dark. So we know we need to do better. That's why we're here tonight and we are planning on doing so moving forward. Please go.
Thank you. Um, I apologize if I'm stealing your thunder for something you might have covered in the next five minutes. But just out of curiosity, um, with the results, I would consider relatively low disappointing turnout on this issue regardless of how you voted. Um, do you have a plan to emphasize more on this form of advertising than maybe you didn't put as much effort or emphasis on, you know, before the ballot? Things like that. Like I'm old school, I say for my age, like I, I actually check the mail, I read the mail. So I learned about this a year ago or whenever we started sending this out. Um, but I would imagine there's a lot of difference. People that checked their mail only, right? So if you didn't catch it that way, a lot of your own social media, you would think your address there would be recognized. Maybe it weren't. So just curiosity, where you think you should strike next if it didn't work in this avenue or the other the first time around? Do you have some suggestions? Like I said, I, I'm, yeah, I'm the, almost the worst person to ask in this scenario because I don't have a great feedback. I'm thirty-five, um, and I don't use social media. So like people my age or younger, we think that would be the first place you would hit me with for a target. And that would be the last place I would see it. Like I said, I pay attention to my mail. So that's pretty direct marketing and it worked for me.
Well, so we're super interested in what other avenues? Because we have heard, we, you haven't reached us. Does anybody have any suggestions for what else we can do? I mean, obviously, there are some homes that were missed with direct mail. But my guess is the bulk of people in the community received mail. But the vast majority of people that, uh, responded, or not, I wouldn't say the vast majority. A lot of people that responded said that they didn't know anything about it. And so if we are doing direct mail and we are doing social media and we're posting the website, we're posting to YouTube, we're doing everything we can for anybody, anybody in here that came in tonight thinking, you didn't get me, how can we do it better? Does anybody wanna weigh in, help us?
Something besides QR codes. I didn't, I read this carefully and didn't notice the QR code at the bottom. It is the tiniest QR code I've seen in a long time. And I just overlooked it.
That's fair.
Thinking that the signs matter for saying QR codes.
Not to monopolize, but again, you know, you guys did a great job three weeks, four weeks ahead of time. I mean, personally, I don't think you could do anything different three or four weeks ahead of time. But like here, I didn't know prior to that. And then secondly is three or four weeks ahead of time, whether, you know, four or against. Um, there wasn't enough time to read everything on the website because there was so much. So all fairness to all of you, you did a great job, I think, three, four weeks out, prior to that.
Well, and if, if I could just touch on that briefly. So a lot of the correspondence that you received in the weeks leading up to the election was from the PAC and not the district itself. And so the PAC was used, the political action, political action committee of volunteers affiliated with the district. Uh, and they were using money that was donated by people or entities to help get the word out. And so that PAC was spending money that I'm not entirely sure that is a wide use of taxpayer dollars for the district to be sending out text messages. I, I'm not saying that we sure shouldn't be, you know, buying lists. I'm not sure if the district sure or shouldn't be doing that. But up until this point, that's not a decision that the district has made to do.
Bill, you asked a question about what else can we do? Maybe I'm old school. I've been in this district now for about twenty years. I moved here from a large suburb in northern Cleveland area. Uh, and it was a, uh, a, a, a suburb that just relied only on bedroom taxing. And so, you know, what I'm seeing here.
Sounds familiar.
Yeah. What I'm seeing here is, is very familiar. And we realized long ago that if you want your schools to be, uh, in, in a good place and you want to maintain the value of your property, you're gonna have to support your school levies. And so you're asking what else can be done? Uh, we, we did, uh, door-to-door solicitation. We, we went door-to-door and talked to people, uh, to get their, make sure that they knew the information and to get that information out. We did phone, phone calls to people. I know that's old school, picking up the phone and calling people. But, you know, uh, you can have all this high-tech stuff, but people like high-touch to know that they are, they're important. So that's one of the things that I think might be something that we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. And?
Sure. I mean, I got messages because I looked at somebody that told me about it, but three weeks before. I would just say, like, I already knew because I knew you guys, but as far as other people goes, like you know how the school sent out like the mask, like, hey, there's a two-hour delay. You could have even like notified, I would say, other people, not given the full detail, but sent them a text that had a link that they could click on it saying, hey, and then it would take the link to the YouTube video. Or something that automatically gave them that information. It's easy, it's simple. They're not trying to find a QR code, just like you said, go door-to-door. But like that would have been something, and since you guys already have the, the call that sends out, or the one call, that would have been something that you guys would have automatically optimized for outward. And it's like free, right? Did you guys have a one call?
Actually, actually.
Or maybe not free, but?
Actually, we, we would love to do that. Unfortunately, it's against the law. So we, we have to be very careful. We cannot use any taxpayer money to support the levy. In fact, our staff can't do any campaigning on work time. The board has to be careful as well. We can, I mean, we could actually go out and do more, but they're allowing me to be in paid. We cannot ask for your support for the levy. And so there's just some rules like.
We can get volunteers to do it.
We can get volunteers. And we can warn you about the levy, but we can't ask you to vote a certain way.
Oh, right, right, right. I wasn't asking. I was just saying like give a, like a, maybe a link to a video that explains the entire levy or bond. Just like you said, only I can't do videos, you can't do that. But if people didn't know they existed?
Right, right.
Great, okay.
And I think, I think we've been overly cautious probably about not stepping over the line.
Um, and I, alright, like, that might fall on me a little bit. My legal background, I'm an attorney by trade. Um, board members have been prosecuted for this very thing. Asking people to go out and vote on a levy. We have to be very careful. So I've heard some comments like, we didn't really help, you know, spread the word. We weren't, we didn't show up to certain things. We had, what we had done was strategically position two board members on every committee during this master facility planning process. No more than two. Because if you have more than two, you're a quorum. And that has to comply with sunshine laws, you have to give notice, you have to let people know you're coming. Um, so we have been very careful. And I probably even was too careful on my own social media because I was afraid of the perception. That being said, we can personally support the levy, right? And we all do. Um, and I could be more vocal on social media. Um, I've actually tried to over the last couple of weeks regarding this meeting, trying to put that out on my own account, trying to put it on the community forum. Um, I do want to say this. There's lots of comments that happen on social media and online. And God bless Bill McCartney for getting into the weeds sometimes. But, um, just because we aren't responding doesn't mean we won't respond. Every single one of our personal cell phones is on our board's website under our board. If you ever have a question about anything, not just this, anything in the school district, call us personally. We're all willing to talk to you. Um, it's really difficult to get into a nuanced conversation in comments on Facebook. So I resist that. Bill thrives on it. But we're all different. So. Okay. Um, any other questions or, you know?
One, um, population you might zero, you know, is retired people. We all are from a country place. And, um, I didn't know anything about this till I requested a absentee ballot. And I thought, I did get that newsletter for the master plan, but that didn't mean too much to me. But I, all I saw on that was a bond levy to build a new junior high, period. That's all I saw. And since then, I talked to a retired teacher who said it was much more involved than just building a junior high. And we all are on fixed incomes and that has a lot to do with it. And we're all eighty and ninety years old and we don't understand social media and all that stuff. So we can't rely on that, uh, to get informed. So I don't know how else you could do it. Um, but the, um, older, older population, I've had some qualms about elevating their, their, um, taxes. That was the main thing.
Well, I personally, I personally would love to come in and if, if you guys would be willing to have us, I would love to come in and have a hour and a half conversation with you in depth. It probably goes deep, much deeper into this, uh, plan than what we're gonna get into tonight. But I would, if you guys would be willing to have me, I would love to come on, bring some, bring some.
Okay, I just wanted to suggest, um, I, I've gotten, sorry, we have a son who just graduated about a week ago or so. Um, big supporters of the schools. Um, one of the things I think could have been done in the materials that were sent out is, um, bulging what the key points are in a very concise way. Being aware of what some of the challenges are. You know, I am on social media to an extent, I'm a certain age, so on Facebook. Um, but, you know, I saw people saying, you know, they're just, uh, we don't know how they're using our money, you know, or whatever. And that's a valid question. And some people saying, you know, how efficient are you being with the money? And I did see somewhere a quote on per capita cost per student of this district, which is really good. Very efficient. And our academic performance is pretty darn high. If you look at those two things, you would walk away saying, we're spending this money efficiently and getting phenomenal results. And I wish those could be in bullets in places that people would really pay attention to. You know, because they need to know what a good job y'all are doing and all our teachers are doing. And how you're doing with not a lot of money and getting incredible results. But there is a thing in young folks' lingo, a TLDR, too long didn't read? You know? What are the, I'm a college professor, I'm guilty of it all the time. Um, but you know, if we can have just those bullet points that really have, display an awareness of what the pros and cons might be seen as in that addressing, just fun.
So I'll, I'll address that. My backstory, if I'm gonna get up. Uh, my name's Bruce Lee. I'm, uh, the newest member of the board, it's my second year. And, uh, what you're referring to, sir, is the State Otter's Spending Efficiency Map, uh, which is something that, uh, I came across and researched for my radio show. I talk a lot about schools, a lot about school issues throughout central Ohio.
Hold on one second, Bruce. Can you guys hear me? Is this microphone on?
Okay, how's this? That's better. So I was referencing the State Otter and his Spending Efficiency Map for every public school district in the state of Ohio. Um, I do a radio show and I talk a lot about schools. Um, I don't talk very much that's good about schools because I'm talking about Columbus City schools a lot and some of the larger suburban districts where they have issues that we don't have here at Alder. Um, as I said at the beginning, I don't know if you've heard me, it's my second year on the board. And, uh, I thought that if I ran for the school board, I could have an impact on development. Uh, my motto to run was protect parents' rights, preserve Alder's values. And to me, that meant that Alder is an agrarian community where we prize and treasure hard work. And, um, what I found is that I really didn't have to worry about protecting parents' rights. Because what I found working with my colleagues in administration and on the board is everybody else shares that same mission. So I've been super impressed with all the people that I've met. I didn't know what I would find. What I've found is like far and above anything that I anticipated finding in terms of the quality of people and how much they care about our students. And how much they care about preserving Alder's values, which is very important to me. In terms of stopping development, well, that was in education. Cause I quickly found out that there are bodies that you're elected to that can affect that, but the school board is not one of them. Township trustees, uh, village councils, county commissioners, they're the ones who hold sway with that. And what I didn't know when I ran for the school board is that a lot of the land that we see being converted into homes right now was already purchased. And in fact, next week, uh, week from tomorrow, the city of Dublin is going in front of the Madison County Commissioners to annex Land Along 161 into the city of Dublin as far as they can get to the, uh, edge of Plain City near Butler Avenue. They might not get all of it, but they're gonna try to get all of it. And when I was, um, engaging with trustees about this over a year ago, I was told Dublin has an open checkbook. And no, it's not an option for, for them. They have had a, a master plan to zone the area between Post Road and 33 and 161 corridor. They've had that plan on the books for about eight years. And if you don't think they're determined, let me just tell you that they own two hundred and forty-three acres out there. And the price they paid for it was forty-four point six million dollars, which works out to a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars an acre. So I wasn't lied to about Dublin having an open checkbook. We all see the seven housing developments that are in construction right now that will add thirteen hundred and fourteen homes to our district and four hundred and sixty-one multifamily units. There are eight more developments that are already approved or are having preliminary approval, which will add another fifteen hundred homes and another twelve hundred apartments. I can remember being a little kid when we took my brother to college in Kansas. And we were driving on I-70 and my dad. And we were driving on I seventy and my dad wanted to get past St. Louis and find a hotel. And we drove and we drove and we drove and I don't know why, but every hotel had a no vacancy sign. I wish we could hang out in no vacancy sign in our district, but we can't. People who move into our district, we have to educate their kids. We are at capacity virtually in every building. And I know there's a desire, and I share it with you, that we could make the new people pay for the new buildings in our district. That would be awesome, right? If every new home had to pay a thousand dollar fee, like the great suggestion that we send out a YouTube video, here's the information, because we already have all your phone numbers, that also is against the law. It's an impact fee, we can't assess it. Township can't do it, county can't do it, it's against the law. You guys have great ideas. There's, the objections to the levy that I heard were all great objections, were all great ideas. You would be astounded how many of them are just not legal. And I don't know why they're not, but they're not. And the first thing that I have to do as a board member is not violate the law in any way, shape or form. So what's the solution? So if you really wanna make new people pay, I wish I had a really awesome tasting pill for you to swallow, but I don't. What I have is the sooner we pass a bond issue. Think of it as a baton that you receive if you vote yes and we construct a new junior high and we expand some of our buildings. So you're holding that baton and it carries a tax burden. But every time a new resident moves into the district, you get to cut off a little piece of that baton and you get to hand it to them. And they get to pay a portion of what you're paying upfront. And the way I can illustrate that to you is that currently on the books, we have approved in the Alder district over the years, people are currently paying or have approved, not paying, but they have approved thirty-three mils of taxes. What you are paying however, because the Alder district has grown over the years, is twenty-two mils. So thirty-three mils are on the books, but you're not paying thirty-three, you're paying twenty-two. And that's among the lowest in the area, only two schools ever lower. So yes, there will be a burden upfront, but as new people move into the district, they will bear that burden. And the last thing that I would say, well, two things, I wanna address, uh, Adam's question. Um, just to reference to flesh out a little bit what this gentleman talked about with the spending efficiency map, I wanna give you the numbers. The state auditor takes our total enrollment and our total budget and divides it, very easy way to find out what he spends per pupil. In the Jonathan Alder district, we spend ten thousand two hundred and two dollars per pupil to educate them. It's elementary's, kindergarten all the way up through senior class. Spend ten thousand two hundred and two dollars per pupil to educate them. That ranks in the ninety-first to one-hundredth percentile in terms of spending efficiency in the state of Ohio. You can go online, you can look at the spending efficiency map from the state auditor. There are very few districts in the Ohio map that are green because you have to rank in the ninety-first percentile or above. We are in green. You know who's not in green? Dublin is not in green. They spent thirteen thousand five hundred dollars a student, they rank three hundred and seventy-third among six hundred public schools in Ohio. Hilliard spends, excuse me, Hilliard spends twelve thousand seven hundred dollars per student, they rank four eighteen. Columbus spends six thou, sixteen thousand two hundred dollars per pupil. Sixteen thousand two hundred dollars per pupil, they rank five ninety-nine. Upper Arlington, great schools, right? I used to live in Upper Arlington. Oh, look for the schools, your property values will soar. Upper Arlington spends sixteen thousand five hundred dollars per pupil, they rank three hundred and fourth. Fairbanks, let's, you know, boil it down to schools in our area. Fairbanks spends eleven thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars, they rank two twenty. Marysville spends eleven thousand oh sixty-three, they rank one thirty-four. And West Jeff spends twelve thousand five hundred, they rank four oh one. I can. Our rank? Forty-fourth. We're forty-fourth in the state among six hundred public schools in terms of spending efficiency. That's a tribute to these, these people over here, our administrators, our teachers, our superintendent, our treasurer. They do fantastic job, fantastic work. I was skeptical when I was elected to the board. I'm, people ask me, oh, I must be miserable serving on the school board. I'm like, no, I love it. I love it because the people I serve with. I love it because they're fantastic at what they do. They really care. And we're getting great value for what we're spending. And we're gonna steward those dollars going forward if we are blessed enough to get approval. So to Adam's question. Said, we live in the district and we look forward to sending our girls to Alder's schools. We are curious and concerned in equal measure for what the school's next plan is with all of the population growth. Our plan is to educate our community better about the merits of what we are asking for and to listen to you to find out if there's a way that we can lower the, the ask even more. We stripped out twelve million dollars for a high school auditorium, which we desperately need. We have great band, great choir, great, uh, performing arts. You know, this is fine for a community meeting, it's not the greatest place for a school play or musical. Um, we stripped out a bus garage. We tried to keep it as low as we possibly could, maybe we can go lower. But as Sonia said and Mrs. Walker said, we're here to listen, we're here to learn. And, um, unfortunately, we can't hang out in no vacancy sign. So as our community grows, our schools have to grow so we can educate the kids that we have. By the way, our contract with our teachers stipulates that we can have, what, twenty-eight kids per class? Twenty-five, twenty-eight? We're kinda maxed out at that. If, and I'm not, I'm not averse to renegotiating that deal, but it's a tribute to our teachers that we did not have a consensus negotiation this time. We wrapped up our contract negotiation in like three days. That's unheard of in the state of Ohio. If you have, uh, any memory at all of the previous negotiation that was not wrapped up in three days, I'll say that. So we're, all of us are on the same page. And I'm kinda preaching to the choir because if you're here tonight, you care enough that you've sacrificed your time to come and learn. And we ask you to like communicate with your neighbors, but we, we blew this on communication. And so help us understand how we can communicate better because I firmly believe in everything that we're doing. Yes, sir?
Um, I have a question, since you're, since you are an attorney.
Yeah.
Um, who is allowed to talk about the bond? Since you guys are obviously not, are teachers, are they?
I'm good. Everybody can talk about the bond.
Okay, who's allowed to promote it? I know the school can't pay for it, so legally, so you guys are CYOA, right? Who is? The reason I'm saying is like if students are allowed to talk about the bond and the key points, cause it's a student, right? Like they're not.
Absolutely. The students, anybody can talk about it in their free time, anybody can promote it in their free time. We just can't, the board members can't have all of us at one place at one time.
So for those students that wanted that, right? They want more space, or maybe teachers if they're allowed, that would be a way to get it out there where maybe they made YouTube video of the teachers saying, you know, it's getting harder to, like express their concerns. Hey, it's getting harder to educate kids when I have this many kids in the classroom. And then maybe the kids are like, hey, it's really hard to catch up. It'd be really great if we had more classrooms. That would be more of a, they are seeing the pain point, they are seeing why you guys need the bond. Because the kids love it, the teachers like teaching. This would be a good video so that you guys are not out of touch. This could be a strictly volunteer, and I'm sure there are plenty of teachers that would like to volunteer and step up and maybe give their personal opinion on it as well as students, I mean, for not all of them, but maybe some of them, you know what I mean?
I saw some volunteers go up in the audience out there.
You saw a teacher saying that? Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and then you could have that out there. And you could, they could be hitting the points. They could share it on their social media, these kids could share it on their social media. You know what I mean, for the teenagers that have it? That would be a very good advertisement for you guys without costing any money except for a little, um, time and dedication. You know, from the students and teachers. And I think that might help you guys, especially if they hear it coming from the teachers as well as the students. So then people would be like, oh, okay, this is why they really need this. That, that would be something that I wanted to say.
Thank you. Um, I am not on the PAC committee, but I know they were talking about ways to engage more people to help go door to door and do some alternative options. I know the PAC is working on that. I think that's a great idea that will definitely be brought back to them.
Yeah, but the one thing that I do need to say about the student stuff is that that's an issue where we have to get parental consent and things like that, so.
Right, that would be like if students wanted to, like their parents don't, so it's just like, like that would be strictly volunteer, but obviously legal, right? Like parents, yeah, 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 go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Hi, um, I'm Betsy Bowser, I have a student at the high school and a student at Canaan. Um, I'm also a teacher in a neighboring district. Um, my husband's a teacher, my brother's a teacher, his wife's a teacher. And the reason I say that is even though my immediate family are all educators, I still had a hard time trying to convince my parents, you know, to vote because they're on fixed income, because they're retired. And I have no idea if this is possible, like is there a way to, um, exclude people over a certain age from having to pay the property tax? Cause that's what it is that goes toward the bond issue. I think that's really one of the biggest concerns is people on fixed income just really are, you know, you're stressed out about those types of increases, um, when you have a fixed income.
Yeah, if I could address that real quick. So the school district gets two parts, two parts of money and operating and then capital. Our operating, we have an income tax, but it is an earned income tax. So all of our seniors, many of our farmers aren't paying for the operating part of our, um, our revenue. The bond, we can't do anything like that. So really, just please keep in mind, we really, we really are concerned about seniors. We are concerned about the farmers, and that's one of the reasons we went with an earned income tax. And so, um, please keep that in mind when you think about the bond levy. And cause, cause we've really tried to do that, it's just that we can't not legally do that with a bond.
Maybe that would also be communicated, cause I know that wasn't something I was aware of to try to educate my parents about. You know, and they just kept talking about, like that was their main concern. Or then to more people on fixed income to maybe be reminded, you know.
So, so just to, just to address this a little bit more directly. So the, the current ask is five point one two mils, okay, which is a property tax. We explored the option of an income tax. However, our current, with the two income taxes that we have for operating, as Steve was talking about, they're a point five and a point seven five, so one and a quarter percent. To fund the bond with, with solely with income tax, we would need an additional four and three-quarter percent income tax, which would bring the total ask at six percent, which I don't think is gonna pass. I mean, that's, that's an astronomical number. Well, the reason, the reason that it's so high is because with a bond, you can pay it over thirty-seven years. But with an income tax, when you, you still have to get a bond, you still have to go to the market for that. You can only amortize it over twenty years instead of thirty-seven years. And so that's why the number is so high. Legally, you can't, we can't stretch it out any more than that. That's why the, the, uh, percentage is so high, certain.
Uh, yeah, that goes, goes back to the whole issue of knowing what the, uh, knowing what the objections are.
Thanks. Uh, but one of the, one of the things is knowing what the objections are. And, you know, the two biggest objections I saw on social media were property tax. Why, you know, that's affects senior citizens, people on fixed income. And the other one being efficiency, cause you know, government efficiency is very much under a microscope right now. And I would be interested to know that. My assumption was we can only fund it through property tax because of the history of property tax funding schools in Ohio. And if, that, this is interesting, that's news to me. And that might have made somebody feel a lot better about a property tax, knowing that the other option is, uh, multiple hundred percent income tax increase. We can do better educating people.
And part, part of the problem with that, think of it like a mortgage, if you're going for a twenty-year mortgage, you're gonna pay a much higher payment than a thirty-seven-year mortgage. And the, um, you're also, when you go to the market and you ask people to fund these funds, they're more secure, you're gonna get better interest rates on a property tax fund than you would on an income tax. Cause it's much less, it's much more set, it's much more certain, income taxes go up and down. So, um, really, the most efficient way to do this was through a property tax.
Mr. Yoder? My name is Fred Yoder, I am a farmer, I farm in both Madison and Erie County. I dare anyone to tell me that I'm not paying my fair share now and we're fifty thousand dollars a year in, in property tax. I'm well educated, I know exactly what you're denying, and you can justify it in the need. I can't afford you, I just can't afford you. And building me a thought to length, I was one of the, the citizens that started the, the income tax there years ago because I think it's the fairest. If you're making money, you can pay more. If you make less, you pay less. But I know so many, you know, I'm seventy years old now and I'm on a, I'm semi-retired, but, but I, there's many, many senior citizens that just simply can't pay it. People cannot afford it. I love the kids, I support the kids, and I wanna do what I can, but, but I simply cannot afford it. You can, you can talk to me for two hours, that doesn't make me afford it. So my question is, can you make it affordable for me? I mean, you know, you said something about you, uh, you can't have a safe now that it's good for, for a place and things like that or, or other types of things. You know, right beside my house is Darby Plains, or, no, Darby Station, excuse me. Those, those, those houses average half a million dollars. Somebody's making money. And it's not the farmer right now because our, our expenses are sky high and our commodity prices are very low. We're losing money now and you're asking me to, to pay thousands more. I cannot afford it. There has to be a different way. You know, the, the Ohio Supreme Court ruled, what, twenty-seven years ago? That the way you fund schools is not, is not legal, but we still do it. There has to be a different way that you can collect money. I know you need money and I know you, you're, you're also, uh, limited to what you can get because I understand with, with federal funds coming in, you can't refurbish something, it has to be new, which is a bunch of. It's, it's, it's not right, okay? So we're almost, and, and I, don't get me started on that. And I do appreciate Mr. McCarty, McCarty's talking about the Tiff lines. We're getting raped by, by developers in this, in this, in this area and it's just not right. The right, you know, they're getting filthy rich off of us. And the other thing too is, is when you start talking about multifamily apartments, you know, you can get a lot of people in a very small amount of, of area, but, and, and that's a different culture. There's people come, there's people go. And but yet, you know, the school system has to adjust for it. You have to provide, you know, uh, proper, uh, uh, amounts of, of, of funds to, to make it go. But my, my whole problem is, you know, I simply can't afford it. Uh, and again, I, I, you say it's four percent for an income tax, so what?
Four and three-quarters.
Four, four and three-quarters, sorry. But my point is, you've gotta have to, but, but the people that can afford it, do that. You know, and what about some private citizen, you know? What, what'd you say the cost was for a thing, twelve thousand dollars or what'd you say? Uh, if a private citizen wanted to fund a specific thing, uh, there's people out there that's not able, why couldn't you do that? And then lower the cost of the, uh, the, the bond. I'm just saying, I'm for the kids, but I simply can't afford what you're asking. Make it affordable and I'll, I'll be glad to support it. At this point in time, and another thing is, yesterday I came, I was in a meeting for almost a half a day with the Jerome Township Fire Department and they're gonna be putting on a bond issue and they're gonna be putting on, uh, they want a couple more mils. So then the question I have is, okay, if you've got two big bonds that you're supposed to be voting on, which is more important, fire protection or schools? That's the, that's what you're putting, it's a perfect storm here, it's a perfect time that, that's, you know, everything's gonna be in jeopardy because you're having to deal with both things at that now. I mean, I kind of like fire department uh protection. I'm, you know, I'm an anti-nester, been an anti-nester for a long time. So, uh, you know, I, I gotta think about, you know, having them call out. We, we just, it's a, it's, we have to figure out a compromise. If you can get it lower and, and maybe call on some foundations or try calling on some private citizens to help out, there are people with money. And so I, I, I just, I really feel a, a, a really I'm a soft heart with, with our senior citizens that are on fixed income. They cannot do it, and you're, you're putting it in peril. That's not.
I'm gonna go ahead and jump into, I'm also a local farmer. Uh, my name is Andre Troyer. Um, I've worked with agriculture for several years. You know, Madison Plains is another school district that's rural, has a lot of farms and stuff like that. And they have lost every one of their uh beds to building a new school. And they were really upset about having to bring in pods and stuff like that, but they did it. And as far as I know from futures that I know in the district, everything is more smooth with that. So why don't we approach something like that, get this first levy paid off, and then go back to the board and try it again? But I would also agree with Fred, you know, most of us here that have land cannot afford to do this. Not only are we dealing with low prices and everything else to get is what, this year being hit by a rain, last year drought, we're barely surviving, let alone trying to put out more money for taxes. And I've got three grandchildren in the district. So, yeah, I love the kids too, you know, and I want to see the best for them. But I also know that we can't afford to do this. So there's gotta be a solution somewhere.
Thank you. So we covered a lot of ground here. Uh, I wanted to touch on a couple of things. Particularly, Mr. Yoder alluded to the uh the money that this uh district recei- is slated to receive. Is we partnered with, uh, when we did our last building campaign in two thousand two, partnered with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, OFCC. And they have certain rules and processes for which they co-fund uh, uh, capital projects for school districts in the state of Ohio. Uh, back in two thousand two, when the district locked in their share, the state of Ohio contributes fifty four percent and the local share is forty six percent. Today, that number would be closer to seventy percent of local share. Uh, so if you think about it like this, when the, our district goes out to build a junior high, we're getting a fifty four percent off coupon from the state of Ohio to build it. Now, with that, like I said, there's rules and regulations associated with that. And one of those is if you, if the cost to renovate a facility is more than sixty six percent of the cost of building new, they will not co-fund the project. So, the question becomes, do we, on principle, spend the, so to, I think the, the junior high portion, I don't know exactly what the number is, but the, the, the question would be, let's say it's ten million dol- it's more than that, but let's say ten million dollars, right? If, are we willing to spend eight million dollars to renovate it so that we can, um, this, this, I'm, I'm kind of losing my, I'm losing where I'm going with this. The, the point is, if, if we, if we follow their plan, we get a fifty four percent off coupon. And if we don't, then we have to uh fund it completely ourselves. And so to be good stewards of local dollars, we have to follow the plan.
And, and quite honestly, the plan that we presented to the community, we were gonna get a reimbursement of seventeen million dollars from the state for the bond that we put out there. Um, the problem is, we, we have to come up with the money first, and then we get that reimbursement later. So we are working, Fred, believe me, we are working every angle to get additional money we can. And, you know, the problem with a lot of this is that it, it's our state and local laws that prevent us from doing some of those things. I mean, you are right. The developers are making the killing here. There's no question about that. But there's no way to recoup that money. The TIPS and abatement process, quite honestly, honestly, has to change. But the only way that's gonna change is, is if we change the people in Columbus. And so, we need your help. It's something that we don't have control of, but we have to change what's going on in Columbus to, to quit that. I mean, the abatements, it's, they are unreasonable. It's just unreasonable for us. And that's what you're seeing fire, more fire levies. That's why you're seeing more mental health levies. That's why you're seeing more developmental disability levies. Because quite honestly, the developers are getting the tax money that we used to get. And, and so we're sorry about that, but we don't have control over that. We all do, only in the way we vote. And so I encourage you to think about that when you go to the polls.
You got a good point there, but I'm talking with Fred, Big Fred Spring. If you turn down industrial parkway, you talk about going to Ziegler's, no vacancy signs. That used to be all farm ground. There's no farm there anymore. The Ralph's lost a little of this farm. Jay just sold his stands on the other day. Where's that money coming from? You used to get taxes from the farmers. Now we're not getting it, why? Why aren't we getting it from the industrial that moved in on the farm ground?
The rea- I mean, if you want to be honest, the reality, the, the honest answer is we receive some money from these big projects, however, due to state laws, local politicians and the state are able to offer incentives to, to, to big projects. And so, they now, we've, we've done our best to try to advocate for what's called non-school TIPS and non-school abatements, so the districts may hold. However, a lot of times there are things that are out of our control, and the, the developers or the, the corporations are receiving abatements, but that's out of, that's out of our control. We can't. I, I unders- I understand your frustration. We're all frustrated by that, but.
The reason, the reason we're here, though, is because these people got this property and aren't paying their taxes, and it's their kids are moving in that we can't afford enough room for. We never had a problem before. Fred, when's the last time you ever heard us have an aggregate levy that didn't pass? We always support our school.
I, I can tell you that, in all honesty, um, we haven't asked for a property tax increase since two thousand and two.
That was to build this place.
That was to build this place, that's right. And we haven't gone back to the community for that. Now, we have gone back to the community for an operating tax, but we have not asked, our, our last one was in twenty fourteen, and we have not asked for an increase.
We supported this one, though.
What's that?
We supported this.
That's right.
Because we see the need for it. Now, I mean, look at in nineteen seventy one, Plain City was larger than Dublin.
That's right.
And now, look, guys, we're getting smaller, like you said, Dublin's kind of this large. And now we have these people that are coming from Columbus and all around. When's the last time you ever heard of a baby being found in the dumpster in Plain City? It's just a couple of years ago. We never had these problems, but everybody comes moving in. These are, they should be supporting their school. If they want their kids to come here, they need to own it up and pay for it.
I think going back to something that was said earlier, and I think it was by Mr. Hulley, the reality is that everybody who is here now, if they approve a bond levy, they are committing every single person that moves into this district without giving them the option. And when they do that, and I'll ask Mr. McCarthy to address this, everybody's individual share of the pie decreases exponentially with each new person moving in. So if we wait, for example, and we say five years from now, let's say we get, you know, twenty thousand retirees for Dublin who are moving out to Plain City for the low taxes. Reasonable, right? Those people are gonna continue to vote down levies. They're gonna continue to vote down bonds, because they don't want to pay the higher taxes. They moved out here for that. We need to commit people now, one, and two, we need it now. We are at capacity in the elementary school, and we are very close to capacity in the high school. And it's not slowing down. We, we can't hang that no vacancy sign. We need it now.
I understand. I know the people are moving in. Have anybody looked at Bobby Moore's proposal? Have you taken into consideration where we built it from, could you drive it now, instead of buying twelve more acres?
Yes, we have. We have looked at all of the information. Um, specifically, so when you have, I, I'm gonna address, we can address the grade configuration separately. Um, I'm gonna address the buildings. So we have a junior high that we cannot renovate, has to go. So our options were, do we build just a seven and eight on that same property, but towards the back of the property? Okay, because you can't, you can't tear down a building while you're building another building. Kids have to go somewhere. So we put, we have to go on the back of the property. Once you put it on the back of that property, you are limited as to how much you can expand that building. It can't grow. You're putting the front of the building, the back of the building lines up against, what, what water is it there? It runs against the back of property. So that building is permanent, it's gonna stay that size forever. It doesn't give us much flexibility. It also doesn't give us much flexibility on what to use in the front of the property. And it also doesn't take into consideration that some of that junior high building that currently exists is redeemable and can be used for central office and preschool. So, okay. Right, you can't use it for K through twelve. So, so we can still use some of the existing building. We are trying to make use of the resources we have. So we tear down most of the junior high, we still use some of that existing building from central office. That takes central office out of the high school, frees up space. It also takes the preschool out of Plain City Elementary that's at capacity and frees up more space. And Monroe. Okay. Now, in addition to that, you have Canaan that handles all the five six, okay? But we got Plain City still at capacity, you got Row rapidly climbing to capacity. What if we pulled fourth grade out of both of the elementary schools, and we make Canaan a four, five building? We move the sixth grade up, okay? Now, and this plan includes a classroom addition to Canaan also. A four classroom, four classroom addition to Canaan. And we can still continue to add on to Canaan. Remember, if we build that junior high in the back of the property, it's going to be as big as it ever will be for infinity, okay? We want flexibility. We're not trying to plan just for today. We are trying to prevent coming back to you again in the next five years, six years, seven years. We are trying to plan twenty years out by building, by giving us the most flexibility in all our buildings. So now we got, we got more room at Canaan, it is now four or five. So now we've got a six, seven, eight building, and we add it to the high school. There are numerous benefits to, to having a campus here at the high school. There are also numerous concerns, okay?
Sort of, you know, shut the junior high school down now, and you sit for what you was talking about, what happens to the ground, to the old track, football field, the baseball field, the parking lot, enough is all.
No.
You're.
We took, we, we, we will need a bus garage, which hopefully we can do on our own with some of that reimbursement money we're getting from the state. That takes the buses off of Canaan property, it moves it over to the junior high property behind the central, which will become the central office. We now have space for a bus garage. We also are renovating that, not renovating, but uh improving the property so that we have additional practice fields over that can be used by the kids in our district over behind the new central office, so to speak, old junior high.
I have a thing about Canaan. So I know a lot of kids complain, my daughter's out of there now, but the water, they all complained about the water there, it was disgusting. The building dripped, it leaked donut. And it's on the corner of an extremely busy intersection. Where, I, I can have the buses right there, and you guys are trying to, where, if you're putting fourth or fifth graders there, which I'm familiar with them having their own building type thing, they are gonna want a playground. Those kids are still, like, maybe the fifth graders have, the fourth graders are still very big into wanting to play sports. There is no room at Canaan for any type of sports for those kids. As far as that goes, like, that is not gonna be, like, how many children, like, think about it, all the fourth graders, they like to play sports. There is no room at Canaan for sports.
The question is, is there enough room at Canaan to, for fourth graders and fifth graders to play sports?
Right, or anything. Yeah, so recess, like, and all that stuff. They're gonna wanna do that. And, like, right now, I know there's, how many fourth graders are like, oh, gosh, Canaan has no real playground. That is, like, the most depressing thing for half of these kids going into fifth and sixth graders. They don't really have that room to play. You know what I mean? Canaan is, I, I, Canaan, it's, I mean, that's, like, I helped, like, trying to, like, getting us on. And, you know, like, when they were doing the whole, you know, it's, I mean, that building is not, it's a very old building.
Well, it's not.
He was at old great.
Just want to weigh in real quickly, hold guys.
No, dude, go ahead.
This is very tight, um.
Yeah.
So, when we went through this master facility plan process with sixty community members, these were all the conversations that were happening. So I want to try to answer your question and Mr. Yoder's question as well, too. If the bus garage can eventually go to the junior high with this plan, that frees up a bunch of space for us to be able to do more things at Canaan, okay? And Mr. Yoder, I know that this is a very expensive plan, this process, but went through sixty community members. Is Mr. Gary still here? Okay. There were other plans that were more expensive than the one that the board is proposing to you now. I'm sure Mr. McCarthy talked to you about that. But we did try to look at, how can we bring the cost down? Let's put an elementary building at one sixty one above, and we purchase that plan. Well, that does free up a bunch of space at the elementary, but that doesn't help us with the capacity at Canaan, doesn't help us with the uh, capacity at the junior high and the high school. Well, another favorite plan, and it was one of mine, and another school board members, well, let's build a grand high school and filter the junior high students up to this building and make it a six, seven, and eight grade. And that would be okay with the capacity, but then the uh price skyrocketed. So we had to have these very hard conversations to continue working those costs down and getting us the most amount of time to have to come back to our voters. That was the goal of that four month process with our community members. Let's create as much space as we can with the most amount of time before we have to go back to the voters. That's why we landed on this junior high plan. Then there was a junior high being built at, uh, the current space, and then there's the junior high being built at this space. That was a really tough one. What we did is we went back to our office and put my administrators through this process. Let's talk about pros and cons of both. We can put the new junior high, the junior high site, and operate exactly the way we are right now. That's, that's great, that's a high standard. Or we can put the junior high in the high school now, and we can operate at a higher standard for more of a headache in this process, but we can share the staff, save money. Uh, share safety person, share nurse people, share reimbursement costs. Have our eighth graders walk down the ninth grade hallway to take in a high school class. So there was a lot of perks and positives that outweighed putting the junior high here and then preserving the junior high space for future opportunities and options to others, uh, other buildings. Like the, like the, uh, central office going there, PK, and the bus garage. Create more space than for Canaan's.
Why not trailers?
Because it's your tax dollars going to trailers.
Same, but trailers is still a lot cheaper temporarily.
Not as safe.
No, not as safe. I, I, I don't know about, I.
We will have to go to trailers once we're ran out of space, and we're trying to be proactive.
I know, I know, I don't, I don't like it, I know it's cold and all that stuff, but temporarily, if no one can.
The trailers are, trailers are coming regardless.
Okay.
It's going to take a few years to build these buildings. We are doing everything we can to try to prevent that from happening, but trailers are coming. But are trailers a permanent solution to this growth?
This district, to, to accommodate, if, if we say we put this off for five years, this district, our, our current budget is roughly thirty million dollars. This district will be spending over a million dollars a year on trailers in less than five years. A million dollars a year. Is that how you guys, I mean, that, I understand that trailers are a, a means to a stopgap, but is that a good use of taxpayer dollars? Trailers that are, they, in a decade, they're trash. They, they, the walls rot, the roof leaks. It's unsafe. You've got kids going outside, uh, tri- uh, moving classes. We talked about in twenty twenty five, the, all of the security concerns. We've spent a, a half a million dollars. We've spent a, a half a million dollars in state, or um, yeah, half a million dollars in state grants over the last three or four years to increase the safety and security of all of our buildings. And now we're going to put kids in the parking lot? Like, does that make sense?
I would just say, I, I just know that when I went to high school and they were remodeling, like for three of the, three of the four years, we were in trailers.
That's going to be an option, but if we delay this entire plan approval of a bond for five years and wait, then we're going to be doing trailers and spending money on trailers for a decade. I mean, we're literally throwing money away on temporary housing.
Also, I, I'd like to, to make a comment to, um, Mr. Yoder. I, I completely understand where you're coming from. Let me just share that when we did this building campaign about 20, 30 years ago, it was five, I think it was eight mils at that point in time. But today, because more people have moved in, you're actually only paying about 1.25 mils to, to finish up what we, what we did 20, 30 years ago. And in the next five years, that bond goes off the books. The other thing is, once we get water and sewer coming up 42, where are communities going to boom? This bond levy, you will not have to pay as much as it's advertised for very long. As soon as people start moving in, it's just like the baton that Mr. Bulley talked about. Your property tax is going to go down and it's going to go down dramatically. Can I, can I talk, can I?
A bond levy can only be used to build a building. That's one thing we did not communicate effectively enough to the community. The, the funds that we get off a bond levy are not spent on teachers. They're not spent on sports fields. They're not spent on anything other than building a building. Okay, so that's important to know. And I had something else and I forgot what it was. Also, if I can, if I can talk just a little bit real quick, just, I know we keep talking about your, your, your share will go down, right? That's very great and all, but I, I, I called the Indian kind auditor just to get, I, I, instead of talking about what, yeah, I wanted to give you a real world example. So I pulled a, a random Jonathan Alder property. Okay, so back in 2013, this, this property was valued at, uh, the auditor had it valued at $275,500. They paid four, $4,296 in taxes. And at that time, they were paying six mils on the 2002 bond. Okay? It was originally in 2002, they were paying 8.9 mils. 2013, they were paying down, it was down to six mils. So they were paying of their, of their $4,296 in property taxes, $506 was going towards the 2002 bond. Okay? Fast forward to 2024. The auditor has their house valued at $312,000. They're currently paying $4,209, but their effective mils, as Mr. Votal said, is 1.5 mils. So they're still paying the same amount of property taxes as they were paying in 2013, which I don't know how they did that because everybody else is paying a whole heck of a lot more. But regardless, they're paying the same amount of taxes, but their portion of their, them, uh, their taxes that are going to the 2002 bond are only $134. So their value went up. Their taxes are roughly the same, but they're, they're, they went from $506 to $134 in a decade. So that is a real world example of what we're talking about.
I'm not exactly sure how to address this, but getting back to the Darby watershed and then redirecting everything down to Deer Creek and dumping all of our sewage and stuff down there. Should have never happened to begin with. And most of these houses should have never been here either. I spent nine years working on this watershed with the state. And, and here we are. So how much, you know how much volume you're going to end up putting into the watershed?
Well, but in fairness, we're not doing it. We, we have no control over that. I mean, I, I, I hear you. We, I think everybody here that's lived here for their whole lives want to protect the Darby. We would, I would completely agree with you. But that decision is well outside of the scope of the school board.
And they're not exactly sure how they're going to pay for that either. And I wouldn't be surprised if somehow they don't try to, you know, put it in some to where we got to pay taxes to get that thing built too. And then the people who's property it goes to, two of them are sitting right here. So.
I'd just like to reinforce.
Mr. Phillips, can you wait on the microphone?
Mike can yell.
Hi there. Um, I was on the board at the time, the 2002 bond letter was put on, and we spent some time communicating how over time, as people move in, as development moves in, uh, that it would reduce the impact of those dollars. Doesn't it? Necessarily reduce the overall taxes you're paying, but the amount that's allocated from, um, the bond levy going to schools does. And so I think that's one area that the school board, the, the district could spend some time on. How quickly that old levy will roll off and, and the impact that it does have. Uh, because there are a number of folks that, when I talked to them about the levy, uh, frankly, they said, as long as I'm paying for one, until that bond levy goes off, I'm not supporting another one. Uh, because they just didn't see that they could afford it. And so it kind of goes along with some of what Fred was saying, but just from a little different angle, perhaps.
Sure. Well, and that's, that would be a great idea if we could do that. Today, the estimate is $425 per square foot to build a school. This, the, the existing bond that we're talking about will roll off in approximately five years. We have about $8 million left on principal to pay, uh, to pay that down. But the reality is, we, we gained it out and if we wait, uh, six years, that cost per square foot goes from $425 today to over $675. Okay? And so I know we can't afford it now, but we're talking, currently we're all paying 52, roughly $52 per hundred thousand in valuation. And we're going to, we're asking for $425 a square foot, but if we wait to save $52 per hundred thousand, we're going to make the, our 70 million, if, if we did the exact same thing in five years, our 70 million dollar project now becomes, uh, one and a half, over one and a half times. So over 30 million, over a hundred million dollars. So I understand that waiting would be great, but every day that we wait, I mean, uh, with, in, I'm sorry, uh, construction inflation is raised approximately 5% a year. The reality is, we're going, we're probably going to be back on the bond in November, or on the ballot in November, asking for some amount of money. If we were to ask for the exact same amount of money, our 70 million dollar ask is now $2 million more, which it's not actually because we built inflation protection into the ask. However, the cost on average is $2 million more from asking in May to asking in November. Every, every, every time we delay this ask, the price goes up. We're not talking by peanuts. We're talking by millions of dollars at a time. And as, as we've said, the popular, the kids are coming. We, we are out of space. We have to ask for money. Whether, whether we're going to come back to you, we're going to ask for money to build permanent structures, or we're going to come back and ask you for money to put trailers. They're going to fall apart in no time. We, we're going to have to ask for more money. That's just the reality of the situation.
Um, I'd like to move on to the six through eight design. I know that there were concerns raised and we heard some things from the community about putting sixth graders with eighth graders and doing sixth graders at the high school. And, um, what all goes into that? Because at, at a very high level, there's not, there's not understanding. I can see how people would be concerned that you have sixth graders walking around with 12th graders and that doesn't seem good. We agree. So Mrs. Delway, would you like to address six through eight attached to the high school and the campus?
Correct. Correct. We have multiple other districts in the vicinity up front of us that do the same layout. And the concern was that sixth graders are going to be with 12th graders. And this is too young and we're going to mix these kids together. But we were very intentional regarding the design stages of doing that, that we have the sixth graders in a junior high building with the seventh and eighth. And even though it's one entire attached building, there would be separation between the high school area, the junior high area, and the sixth graders would have their own area within the junior high building. They would have different lunchtimes. They wouldn't be eating lunch with the ju, with the seventh and eighth graders. We wanted to be really intentional about keeping them in their own kind of area. But the benefits that it gives us really outweighs kind of the, the, a lot of the negative impact that we could think of. Especially from a curriculum standpoint. Something most people wouldn't under, or wouldn't have understood previously is that our curriculums, the way we have purchased, go from K through 12, I'm sorry, K through five and six through 12. So we have this overlap in the Canaan building with our staff and our students. They're having to use two different curriculums because the way curriculums are made does not adapt to our five, six building as it is. It's more for the K through five. So the fifth grade teachers are teaching one curriculum. We have an amplified reading for our K through five kids. That's a CK on that. We have an amplified ELA for our sixth through eighth graders. And so even when we have professional development with our teachers, it creates a lot of inconsistency because they're teaching two different curriculums. It causes a lot of, um, complication just in that. Everything's working fine. As it is now, obviously we, Mr. Bulley, our, our numbers are great for the quality of education our kids are getting for the money we're spending. But it, it would be really helpful just from the curriculum side of it alone. When we move the sixth, seventh, and eighth graders together, um, there's crossover with kids that need to go up a couple of grades. Some kids, you know, they're accelerated in their math. They're accelerated in their language. They're then able to have access to those higher level instructions that they aren't at Canaan because of the distance and the, the, um, transportation, that kind of thing. Our math as well. We have kids that, that elevate for their math. They are accelerated in their math. They go to the high school. Well, we don't have to transport kids to the high school if we have a campus where they can access those higher educational opportunities right where they are. There's staff that are trained for that. There's, you know, a lot of, the crossover that we have now, um, is that those issues are solved if we can put our sixth graders with our seventh, eighth in the same building. There's a lot of research as well. We have a consultant with the district who sent over some research because there was um, discussion about the sixth graders. Maybe it's not good for the sixth graders to be with the older kids. First of all, the busing is not an issue because they're already bused on the same buses with the high school kids, as well as our fifth graders. So in this new, in this new layout, the fifth graders would be going down to a different bus route with the elementary kids. K through five would be on one bus route. So we're actually maybe allowing for those kids to be a little more protected, the younger, the youngest ones, because the fifth graders would be going down the elementary routes. The sixth graders would stay on the same routes. It's not any different than what they have now. But there's a lot higher achievement outcomes with kids that can be with the older age grouping in sixth grade. More favorable student behavior. You can have peer mentoring if needed. We can have, um, a lot of other opportunities made available because of the proximity to more resources for those sixth grade kids, educationally, socially, athletically. I know one thing that has, has been the case in the past with our junior high, a lot of our sports are club teams and I just had the thought the other week, you know, it would probably really help our programming to have everything on one campus. We have the junior high baseball team here with the high school baseball team. And there's a lot of maybe crossover that could happen, whereas it doesn't necessarily with everything being down at the junior high separate from the high school.
Can I weigh in about this study?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I read a lot of studies and I'm going to tell you this. There is a study for everything. Especially in the field of education. And the studies are all may show, may do, you know, they're trending in this direction. And when it boils down to it, when you are talking about the actual educational experience of each student, it depends on first and foremost, the teachers in that room, the administrators in that building. So when you have concerns about the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade being on the same campus as the high school, I want you to ask around in the community and say, how much do you trust your administrators? How much do you trust your teachers? Because our plan is to keep the sixth grade separate. They're not going to be wandering around the high school hallways. Nor are the seventh and eighth graders going to be wandering around the high school hallways. We do have control over these buildings and we do, this board has the ultimate faith in our administrators and the job that they do to make sure they are protecting each and every single one of our students. So if you want to come at me with a study, I can come back with a different study that says something totally different. But really, people mean something. People. And, and we are very blessed in this district to have the people that we do in charge of making these decisions and in charge of the education and welfare of our students. Dr. Quick.
Carla, Mrs. Quick.
Dr. Miller, Mrs. Quick. She's Dr. Now. Do you have anything you wanted to add regarding the sixth grade, like with the curriculum and the?
I love that you just, I was thinking of, uh, Dr. Quick. I, I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm Carla Quick, Assistant Superintendent in Teaching Teaching and Learning. And I also was a, I went to Canaan, went to the five, six building. I grew up in this community. And I, we're just so blessed to have you all here to share your thoughts and your opinions about what's happening. But I would, I would just say that Mrs. Delway did an amazing job talking about all of the, the talking points that we've been kind of debating and sharing with each other. I think for our department, this is our department right here, um, and our principals, one of the things that is really, uh, important as we're thinking about this decision is, uh, from a curriculum and instruction standpoint, sixth grade curriculum really does fit, um, from the standpoint of materials with the seven and eight. And what we know is our Canaan team is doing an amazing job right now making it work with two different programs happening within one building. So kudos to the Canaan administration and, and teachers. I think what I would add is just what Mrs. Walker shared is that our teaching and learning that's happening is, is so successful because of the people that work in Jonathan Alder and our parents that, that do such an amazing job supporting their children. So Mrs. Delway, when I cover it, she had accepted that you did an amazing job and thank you all for being here tonight.
I also, there were some concerns about traffic and parking in the campus. And, um, Dr. Miller and I talked about this today quite a bit. I'm going to have you address it because you said it so eloquently.
I don't, I don't think I did. When we were going through the master facility planning with the community, we did ask our architects and engineers, is it possible to put this other six up to eight grade building on the site? Because traffic is already a bottleneck at some points in the mornings and after school at the release time. They did a drone study during the time that students are coming and going, parents are coming and going, and buses are coming and going. And what they taught us is, we're not utilizing. And what they taught us is we're not utilizing the space in the property very well as we sit right now with just the nine through 12th grades. So we asked, okay, so if we add another three grades, can we do this better? And they absolutely told us that, yes, you can fix the flow of buses, parents dropping, and student drivers with this additional building. If you use more of the property, more of the queue, more of the driving space than we already have here. So we've been doing more plans to put that together. There's some concepts out there. The most important thing is if we get all of our parents, drivers, and student drivers, all of 42 circulating around in the right direction and exiting as safely as possible. So that's a plan that we're working on right now. It's not completely set in stone, but what the experts said is it definitely can be improved. I guess one of the most important factors to this, one of the experts that is hired by the board through this engineer team, he is a Jonathan Alder parent who goes through this parent line. So he has these drone studies, looking at the car flow coming in, seeing how much of a pain point it actually is, experiences it as himself as a father dropping off in the line. He's going to help us improve this actually going into next year with just the high school and then in the near future with the junior high end up here. So if the junior high, when the junior high goes on this site, with the amount of green space that we have, 140 more spaces can be brought into this area. And then the board just agreed upon with the landowner north of the high school, 12 acre strip to allow us more bus loop and parking and activity fields. So that is not part of the bond. That is a separate purchase that the district and the school board is willing to make so we have more space for all of the traffic coming and going. So with the architect's help, we can improve the traffic flow starting next school year for our certain, or for our high schoolers. With the construction of the new junior high going on this site, we can add 144 spaces. Then the district is going to purchase 12 acres north of the district to help with that space, parking, drives, bus loop, and some athletic fields.
Are there any more questions?
If you bring the bond issue back to the ballot, are you planning on bringing the same facilities design? Or would there be any changes made? Or would you bring back the same exact design?
We don't know yet. We're working on that over the summer. It could be the same design. It could come with alterations. It could be a phased-in approach. We're trying to, here's what I can assure you. This board is trying to make the most fiscally responsible decision possible while giving the best we can to our students. I also want to address this space here. The music program deserves better than this. There's no question. It was probably, it dominated our board meeting when we were discussing whether or not to include the auditorium on this bond ask. But in the interest of our community that elected every single one of us up here to basically take care of your interests, represent the taxpayers, we made the hard decision not to include a new auditorium. New, an auditorium on the bond ask. Instead, what this board decided to do was when we get that refund from the state, use that refund money to add an additional auditorium onto this high school. A portion of it, right? Right, because now it's actually gone up. Like, so we're getting more back than we covered costs for an auditorium. So we could do the auditorium, could do a bus garage. We could do the additional things that are not included on this ask. And again, that property, that 12 acres, is not part of this ask. That is coming out of our funds that we currently have to purchase that property.
I think I, can you hear me? My name is Maynard Yoder. We moved here to the Auburn District 27 years ago. Our children graduated from Jonathan Alder. And one of the things that drew us here was the school district. And what we've heard tonight, if I hope someone was taking notes, this information, I can't imagine that the people of this community, if they heard what we heard tonight, would vote against this levy. The school district, what you guys, what you're being asked to do is the impossible. You are. I just, thank you. We appreciate you so much.
Well, thank you. I do want to thank everyone here and thank this community. You know, I have been on the board for over 20 years and this community has always invested in our kids. That is what has made Jonathan Alder great and our community great. There's a reason people want to move here. It's because we care about kids. And what we are asking, I know it's tough. It is really tough. But we're asking for one more investment in our future and our kids. And I know, I know it's really hard. But this community has risen time and time again for our kids. When you go to our sporting events, everything, it's just phenomenal what we've got here. And we want to keep it special. What we've got at Jonathan Alder is extremely special and we want to keep it that way. But the only way we can do that is with your support. And so I ask you to please keep Jonathan Alder what it is today. Invest in our kids. Thanks.
What time, where, next meeting?
We don't have, we don't have.
Are you talking about a school board meeting?
Oh, the board meeting?
June 24.
Five o'clock from here.
Five o'clock here?
In the library. Five o'clock in the library.
Probably better start out, seriously. I mean, really.
2:24?
2:24.
5:00 PM, right here.
Just, just, I don't want to answer this, I know you will. What is the possibility of a sales tax?
You know, we. All right, so my name is Mark Engels. I'm the CFO here. I, you know, I'm not a district resident, but I've been immersed in the community since I've been here since August 2023. So I'll thank the board again for, you know, for being behind this opportunity. I have been noticing the suggestions of alternate ways of funding a large type of project, such as a school building, construction project. Ohio School District should not have authority to levy a sales tax. This is not one of our tools in our toolbox. I know Mrs. McCarty mentioned the income tax. One wrinkle in that is we have to be in OFCC program right now, co-funded for this segment to be able to even do that, which we're not. So it's a nuanced thing. So we wish there was more tools in our toolbox. However, the best and most responsible, fiscally responsible manner of funding a large project like this is through a 37-year bond backed by a property tax. The reason for that is we get better terms. We have to pay interest on this. This is like taking out a loan. We're stretching out that payment period as far as we can in order to reduce our annual debt service. We are also looking at being able to have the best terms or paying a lower interest rate. We've been good fiscal stewards of your dollars. That's something that our underwriters will look at, that's what the bond worker will look at. That will give us a better interest rate. So it is something that I wish we had other ways of going about it. But fortunately, our, you know, means aren't limited. And I know we talk a lot about how great Alder is. It is great. And I know one of the things that Dr. Miller has brought to the district is just a higher level accountability to elevate those standards. That's interesting for a low to begin with, but we can always achieve more. We've been doing great with our current configuration and our current setup. However, there's a limitation on that. We were running buses that are half full in the elementary routes because of how we were running a 5 and 12 route. Then it came to a 4 route, two different buildings. That's not efficient. We're trying to address that efficiency through this ask, through the bond ask. We're looking to, we, when we developed this plan, we didn't add too many bells, we didn't really add any bells and whistles. We were using a property in the junior high. We're looking to add to a built facility here to maximize our current use. If part of some of these decisions we've been asked, that we're being asked for, we cannot answer it right now. We can't tell you exactly what the design is going to be. We can't tell you this is going to be a skyline. We can't tell you how many windows there are going to be. What the playground at Canaan is going to all the play. We can't answer that question because that'd be the next phase once we see your funding. We can't do it. Right, so that's what we're doing here. That 7.6 million, majority of that was going to the 6-8 building. That is the biggest need right now. But every building must be touched. Every resident of this district would see some benefit from a project like this. Digital space at Plain City, digital space at Monroe, a dedicated centralized preschool location, right? An early childhood education is at a premium in the community. We're going to expand offerings. Have the central office move out to a central location as well. Right now, we take up three classroom spaces here at the high school. We have a teacher on court. That's not a good way of serving students. We can get out, move to the junior high, and that'd be a lot cheaper than building even a modular unit on the 340 West Main, which we did pursue. You know, how do we get the central office out sooner? That's going to be a major cost. We want to be fiscally responsible. So it is something that I do want to recognize that it is an additional tax burden. And it's something we take, like, I have a tax burden myself. I understand how everyone's costs are rising. So is the school district. That's why this project, this 70 million, $70 million at 5.12 mils, that's what we're trying to be as efficient and cost-effective as possible. So I know that was.
Okay. I don't know if you guys have thought of this area or not. Do you guys own the property behind Plain City Elementary, that field? Are you able to buy that now?
It was available for sale, yes.
I mean, okay. The reason I was asking is, like, right now you guys are saying you have buses that are half full because you need K through five to ride separate buses. Right now, Canaan, you have to split your K through five education curriculum. Why not add on to the elementary schools for fourth and fifth? No, you already have Monroe for one side of the district. And then you have Plain City Elementary. Why not turn Canaan into fourth and fifth for that side of the district? Just like you guys split down the line and then just add on to here or keep them, mix them into the junior high? You know what I'm saying? Or add them on into Plain City Elementary? You know what I mean? Add the extra rooms for just fourth and fifth grade that is on this side of where the line split is. And then once they go into high school, you know, obviously there's that. But then the junior high, I mean, you still have to do that. You could add, like I said, you could add the fourth and fifth to the elementary schools and then put that side junior high in Canaan. Sorry, is what I meant to say, Canaan. And then keep the junior high here. That would still give you guys the extra room just now if you pulled out the students by splitting the property line, you know what I mean? Like, by how they do, you know what I'm saying? How you guys separate by where you live, you go to, right, Monroe. So if you just add, and then it's like Monroe gets their junior high, basically that side, and then this side, and then now you guys have office in the junior high. And now you're also not doing half empty buses because you have your K through five going just directly to the elementary schools and your curriculum.
Right, yeah, thank you. That's something that we could look at, but the.
So the add-ons might be cheaper. If you're just adding on fourth and fifth.
So you need, the fact of the matter is you need X amount of square feet per student. It doesn't matter whether you build it on to an existing building or you build a new building.
Right.
The cost is almost identical. And so the. What's that?
Why can't we get construction companies or builders, like they do at the home, whatever? If we could try to work out for that and try to get someone to sponsor the school, right? Put their name, hey, this company sponsored the education department.
The. So we looked at a bunch of different grade configurations and adding kids in different places and moving them around. The plan that we settled on, or not settled on, the plan that we selected was the most efficient use of kids, butts in seats with the square footage that we need to educate those students. Does that make sense?
No, 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 I got that. That's why I was just trying, I was just trying to save you, like, buses, right?
It's the most, it's the most efficient, it's the most efficient way to do it, which translates to the lowest price from a value perspective.
No, I mean, I got that. That's why I was just trying to say turn Canaan into that whatever property line into their junior high.
We did, we looked at all that. It went to the community and it was debated between parents. We had a lot of comments about people not wanting to send their elementary students to Canaan. You know, K through three. It just, there was, there were so many different configurations that were considered through this process and we're going to look at them again. And our goal, our goal is to do, again, go to taxpayers with the least investment on your part that gives the entire district the most flexibility for the longest time period so that we don't have to keep coming back to you with bonds in the future. That's our goal. So it's, we could do anything we want. But we're not trying to do everything we want. We're trying to do only what we need and what we need now. And again, going back to that, let's wait five years. If we wait five years till that bond falls off, we also are looking at additional three years to build and we're going to need trailers in the next year or two. So now we're paying for trailers for eight years. And let me tell you something. You guys, it's expensive. I did not think it was going to be as expensive as it is to get trailers. But when we were looking at central office in town on that property, the old elementary property, just to put a trailer there for central office was, it was like $400,000. Almost a million dollars for three years. Well, this board went back to central office and said, good luck, guys. You're in the high school for a little bit longer. We're not paying that. We're not going to spend money on temporary space. We're not going to spend money needlessly. So it's a combination of all these factors. We are going to take everything into consideration. We're going to review it. We're going to make sure that this is, we are coming to you with the most fiscally responsible ask possible. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any further questions?
Obviously, you're coming back again in November. And I understand a bond is 37 years, income tax is 20 years. Is there any way of dividing the amount? Where part of it is property tax and part of it is income tax? I think the farmers would appreciate seeing a little bit of relief. Is that possible or is it not even possible?
What? Yeah.
No. Sorry. You know, again, you know, we would look at every opportunity when it comes to financing and how to lessen the burden. We did look at in terms of this current bond is currently on our books. Can we leverage the current millage and roll it on to basically have no new millage left? Fortunately, we're just too far outside that window. And as we mentioned here before, this is going to be more expensive to do this project down the road. We are trying, we were, and I had also heard about my developers' pay. We don't, we don't have a seat at the table. We do not have the ability to negotiate with them and say, we need you to pay us a million dollars a year or three million a year or whatever our annual debt service would be. Because that's, you know, we don't have the ability to negotiate with them with that.
Why can't we take it to the news? Okay, why can't we take it to the news? How about us citizens take it to the news? Is it like all the amount? Which is good because we can like pull them out, make them equal.
So Mr. Wa, Mrs. Walker is asking, why can't we split it out? The reason for that is because this is a bond. We have to go to the market. And they want a reliable, secure funding mechanism. Because you, anyone here can go out and invest in a bond. You can go. You can go out and buy shares and you get annual interest payments. And, and if we were to somehow split it up between a stable revenue source, like a property tax that doesn't fund it 100%, go to a less stable income tax. Well, first of all, it's not legal. We can't even do that. There are a combination bond and income taxes, but that income tax is just for operating. So that's for keeping the lights on, for staff in the buildings, for buying buses. And we're not asking for any additional operating money because we have a good stewards. We have been able to save money for the future for major capital projects. We're doing major roofing projects in this building. As mentioned before, we're not using, we weren't going to use any of the bond proceeds if we were successful on land purchasing. We already had that one set aside. So a lot of this is just, it's the complicated nuances of our tax code, our tax law. Our legislators in Columbus could, they could potentially change things, but our bond market is national. You know, when we go, if we were successful, we get rated in Chicago and our bonds are sold in New York. So anyone in the country can buy our bonds, and that's why they don't mess with it. So, yeah, we would love to be able to have other avenues of doing that, that I'd be more creative, but unfortunately, our hands are tied.
Short of a wealthy benefactor, which we are always over.
And I don't want to get into too, I don't want to get into too much into the weeds here as well, but even if a wealthy benefactor were to show up. We are running into issues of debt limitations. We can only legally borrow so much money without a vote for the people. So. I know, but we still need to get the authority to borrow that money, even if they pay for it. So this is what City Columbus says all the time. They have these bond issues on their ballot that's backed by the income tax. They don't actually levy the, the bonds. They don't actually levy the tax because, but they do have to get the authority from the voters to actually go out and borrow the money. So there's all these nuances. If we did have that wealthy benefactor, we still have to be on the ballot to get the authority of the voters to even go forward with the project. So again, there's a lot of nuance with that, but if there's anyone out there willing to donate 70.6 million, we definitely won't say no. We'll definitely take it. And then if, you know, it does open up more avenues, of course, but it's something that we, we were being creative throughout this whole 18-month, two-year process before asking the voters to pay. You know, the plan is that we will be back another ask. The price, you know, how the actual plan is going to look in practice, you know, still to be decided, but the cost, there's very little room for it to change. The cost is the cost. So just one metric that I can give on cost. Upper Arlington built a new high school in 2019. And if they were to build that same building today, it would cost them 80% more than it cost them in 2019. So I know some of that's COVID-sensitive, but as everyone knows, like, you know, inflation is supposedly down, but it's also cumulative, which means prices don't really go down. It's just rate of increase goes down. So I know that, that number's been published in the Dispatch that Upper Arlington School was built in 2019 and the cost is going to be 80% higher six years later.
We've talked so many times, or you guys have said so many times, about as people come into the district, it's going to lower our cost, right? So I know we have so many elderly people here. I would never vote down for the bond, for anything, you know. I just wouldn't, but I really did struggle with it. So is there any way for you guys to tell us? I mean, if we have, what, 4,000 more homes coming into the district? I don't really know the number, but whatever it was, 4,000? Okay, sorry. If we have that many. Oh, more than that, you're saying? Okay. So I'm just saying, is, if, if there's some way for you to tell us as these homes come in, what, how is that going to change the percentage of what we're each paying?
Well, they're going to pay the same amount.
Well, I thought they said that it was going to.
They're going to go to the schools.
No, it's per percent.
So. Yeah, the share of this bond would go down. Yeah, the share of the bond would go down. However, it would be irresponsible. Sorry, go ahead.
You pay less if it goes down.
You, yes, you, you're, no, you would pay less. You would pay.
Less for property tax.
You would pay less for property taxes. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I can't say what every other, I can't say what other tax anybody else is going to levy, but your share, your portion of this bond would go down 100%. Now, to answer your, to speak directly to your question of can we give you some idea of what you might expect? And the answer to that is it would be very irresponsible of us to ask our treasurer to give you, to, to make any sort of a commitment to you about what we would expect rates to do or property taxes to do. Because for all, you know, who knows what's going to happen? If, if water and sewer comes, it could go a lot faster. If water and sewer stops, it may be delayed for five years. We don't really know. And so I don't want to sell you a bond based on your property tax, your portion of property taxes decreasing and then that not come to fruition. And then you come and paying this board because we told you that it was going to go down by this amount in this amount of time. Does that make sense?
It does. And I was just talking about, you know, everybody that lives here, and I will probably soon be one of them, within that 37 years, for sure, on a fixed income, you know, and they're trying to spread their money out. So I was just thinking the idea of if, as these people move in, the properties keep coming, that it would spread those, spread that cost out.
It absolutely will. The other thing to keep in mind is a lot of these new builds are very, are more expensive than what we currently live in. They're, they're going to pay based on the value of that property that they buy. And so they might pick up a greater share than what you're paying.
So what we're saying is that 179 for 100,000 is the most. It's the most. It will not go up. It will only go down from there for 100,000.
I was just going to say that there is a, one of the very large developments that's just getting started, the Dell Web community. I can imagine that the majority of that neighborhood will not be bringing students into the neighborhood since it is a 55 and up community. So that kind of can help a little bit, spread those dollars and also not bring students in.
This is going back probably an hour ago at this point, but the example that you used with the study in county, was it the 2013 property compared to years before and all the way through, what, last year, 2024? And so many nuts and bolts in the simplest way to communicate it as possible. Did you guys use any numbers or results from that study? Or could you use them, let's say, as soon as November to illustrate the fact that an 80% increase on a building that was built in the Columbus Bay School District six years ago, you know, 8% now compared to what it was six years ago, things like that? Obviously, everything is going up except in examples like your study where your share and your actual cost of tax has gone down. How many things in general life since 2019 can you think of have gone anywhere but up? Regardless of groceries, gas, everything's more expensive. And you have a study that proves actually this specific thing that we're voting on can go down. And it's a local study, right? Yes, it will go down. And it's not a study from California or wherever. It's a study from down the road. So anyway, as I'm rambling, I didn't know if you can use that as marketing and promotional material if you haven't rolled that into your campaigns already.
That's a, that's an excellent idea. Bill is incredibly geeked out about painters and no.
Yeah, I'm an engineer. I just, I just very crafty, sell spreadsheets all day, so.
I'm sure you have made an excellent visual summary or another, and that's a great suggestion. Thank you for that.
Yes. Well, and just as we talked, you know, I know the concept, some people's idea is let's wait. But if you think about, so this is, the 2002 bond was a $25 million bond. Do you guys know, remember, everybody remember what you built for $25 million? Plain City Elementary. Jonathan Oliver Junior High School. Almost completely rebuilt Monroe Elementary. Almost completely rebuilt Canaan Elementary. Plain City Elementary. Did all of that for $25 million. Today, we're talking about 70.6 million to build a six through eight additions, four classroom addition at the high school. I'm sorry, eight at the high school, four at Canaan. Renovations, some small renovations at Plain City Elementary and Monroe. So again, I think, I think you misspoke. I think you said new junior high. You meant a new high school.
Yes.
You said new. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I meant a new high school, yes.
Mr. McCarthy, can you add the village at that $25 million rate and explain where we're at now?
It was eight, it was 8.9 in 2002, and today it's 1.5. Dr. Miller, did you, the question that I handed you had a part B to it. Did we address that during this part B?
That had another question about how does the facilities and operations scope look? Is the equipment old, well-maintained, and a big burden to the finances?
Facilities. Current facilities.
Current operations scope. So.
Plain City Elementary is our newest building and was, students entered that building in the 2010, 2011 school year. Everything else is over 20 years old. So we're talking over 20-year-old roofs, original HVAC systems. If you've been by this high school in the last week, you saw the blacktop project going on. All of our buildings and facilities need this type of work. I don't want to get too much into the weeds, but about 10, 15 years ago, Mr. Botol could touch on this. The district was in a different financial state. And I do believe that maintenance wasn't, we weren't able to maintenance the HVAC and the facilities the way they should have been. So Mr. Ingles and I are doing the best we can. We brought in a new team. We brought in a new HVAC company. We're working with new water operators to help us get everything up to code and running and flowing. And what I'm hearing from staff is the buildings are pumping hot and cold air better than they have before. We're extending the life of this equipment and doing it at the most reasonable cost value for placing equipment. We're trying to extend it. But really, at any time at any of these buildings, we will have to do roof repair, HVAC repair. This building has a new blacktop all the way around. But just this, just this evening, I sent a picture of Mr. McCarthy. That skylight out there, I've learned, has been leaking for 15 years. So if you come in, staff and students come in on a rainy day, you're getting dripped on. Well, our students and our staff deserve better than that. So this board has put quite a bit of money into those types of repairs, and it's happening this summer. So our students are going to come to a dry building here at the high school. That's how much they care about what type of environment our students are in. So we're doing the best we can to extend all of the equipment. Over here, Mr. Lesser, if you would, raise your hand. We have a brand-new operations and brand-new maintenance team that I hired just this year. They're evaluating and assessing everything across the district. And I couldn't say enough about how we're elevating everything across the district. Every administrator in district office is a new administrator, part of our team in the past three years. Mrs. Byers, she's going to elevate the technology department. I hired Mrs. Quick and Mrs. Crawl. They're going to elevate the teaching and learning and the special ed and the student services. Mr. Lesser is going to elevate the operation. So I promise you, we're going to give the best that we can to all of our students, all of our staff, and all of our families. Yeah, I just wanted to touch on this quick. You know, the numbers guy, just kind of give you guys an idea of, you know, one thing we do hear a lot is, you know, where is the money going that's being raised for, for the school district? And again, we're talking about operating dollars. So it's operating business, the bond and the capital project, you know, that's the purpose of this meeting. 53% of all our expenses, it goes to the classroom. It goes to our teachers and our staff, our supplies, anything that goes to what a kid needs to learn. The next highest expense is our facilities. As you know, most of the facilities are 20, going on 25 years old. Plain City Elementary is our newest building. Most of the major components in a school building has useful life between 15 and 20 years. So now we're running up into the end of that useful life. One of the benefits that we've had with the new team that's in place here is that we're able to identify and get a replacement plan in place. We are able to identify, put aside money for these major projects. So when they do come up, we're not caught off guard. We can afford them. We don't have to scramble and try and find ways to, you know, find money for a new roof or new chillers, HVAC system, because we have a plan. And that's something that was new as of, really, this past year, working with Dr. Miller and the operations team. This is something that we're dedicated to because as you may notice, in this plan that we're talking about tonight, all, all of our current buildings will still be used in some fashion. And we want to be able to extend those useful lives as far as we can. So that's where we're spending our money, making sure that we can have a safe, warm, safe, dry environment for our students. We're on the way there, but I just wanted everyone to know that it is a main priority for us in the going forward. And if we already built a six eight addition and have those additions to the other buildings, part of the bond ask is to upgrade our systems in those buildings. Again, to extend the useful life of our current buildings to keep us off the ballot even longer. So it is a major priority for us. And we haven't shared any details, maybe not at this time, but we can answer your questions offline.
I just want to reiterate that if there are any questions that come up about any factor in our district, please, every single person up here on this lower-level floor is willing to entertain any of your questions, from curriculum to busing to board issues. And please, show up at the board meetings. I mean, we'd love to have you all there. I really thank you all for coming tonight, for giving us an opportunity to listen to you. If you have any additional follow-up questions, please reach out to us. We're going to, like I said, we have a meeting on June 24th, and we'll probably have it here again in this space. And thank you. I think we're going to wrap it up, but thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have to adjourn. But you can go. I get a motion to adjourn then January 10th.